Good evening. Welcome to the July 24th, 2023 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, and figure Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up tonight, we have an exciting introduction of our new Stillwater Regional Airport Director, Kelly Reed, and Melissa is going to give us that introduction.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Melissa Reames, Deputy City Manager. Very pleased to be before you this evening to introduce you to a new colleague, Kelly Reed, and she will be taking the helm at the airport. Well, she's already done that. She showed up for work on the 19th. And so she's been getting acquainted with our staff and our airport, and she and Gary have been working closely together to try and facilitate that transfer of knowledge. We haven't gotten the brain dump figured out yet, so we're transferring knowledge the old way. And I want to give Kelly the opportunity to introduce herself and speak to you.
Thank you, Melissa. Hi, good evening, Council members. My name's Kelly Reed. I'm excited to be back in Stillwater. I'm an OSU graduate from about 20 years ago. I'm a private pilot, and I don't know if you know much about my background and bio. I started off in airport operations, in airport rescue firefighting, worked my way up into management positions. I worked at five different airports. Most recently, I was in airport planning, overseeing planning and engineering documents for airports throughout the Pacific Northwest and Alaska regions. So a lot of different time in the Midwest and on the West Coast and far north.
Excellent. Well, we're very excited to have you here in Stillwater. Welcome back as also somewhat 20 years older graduate of OSU. It's great to have you here, and I think your airport planning background's going to come in very handy as we plan the next phase at Stillwater Regional Airport. So welcome back to Stillwater.
Thank you. It's nice to meet everyone.
And just quickly, I'd like to give a big thanks to our friend Gary Johnson. Gary has been with us for the last three or four months, and he agreed to stay on through the end of July just to kind of help Kelly get up to speed. I just can't say enough thank yous to Gary for helping us keeping the ship afloat and keeping us moving forward.
Absolutely. Thank you, Gary. Good to see you. Gary, congratulations on your second retirement.
You may not give up.
All right, councilors, item four on the agenda is the consent docket. Questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
I move to approve consent.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. A vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Don't have any public comment for items not scheduled for public hearing, so we'll move down to item seven, which is public hearings. First up is CC 23-122, which is to receive public comment regarding a request from Ghost and Associates on behalf of Stillwater Medical Center Authority for consideration discussion, possible action, including recommending approval or denial to rezone approximately 53 acres of property located east of 12th and Blakely and north of Stillwater Creek, including property more commonly described as 1201 South Adams Street and 1200 South Adams Street from Office O and Agricultural A to P Public. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we did.
Ms. Porter.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. My name is Jacqueline Porter, presenting on behalf of the Planning Department on this item that was previously stated. It is a map amendment request to rezone the subject property with the addresses 1200 and 1201 South Adams Street from Office and Agriculture to Public. Here's an area map of the subject property located south of West 12th Avenue and east of South Blakely Street. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. The location is for Stillwater Medical Plaza and Semirhan Medical Services are located on this parcel. To the north is the Baymere Edition with Central Drug there located there. The current zoning of the subject property is Office and Agriculture. Public is located to the northeast for Southernwood Park and to the east a little further is the Booker T Washington School, which was recently rezoned to Public. Baymere Edition that is located to the north is zoned commercial with a PUD, and properties to the west is zoned RSS and RTM. Here is the future land use map of the subject property. The future land use map is the projected desired use in the community at the time of the adoption of the comprehensive plan. Public is the desired future use of the property with similar zoning to the east. Stillwater Medical Center Authority would like to rezone the property to reflect the same public zoning district as their facilities on West 6th Avenue and allow the opportunity for future uses of public ball fields on a portion of the land. Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates is here to represent the applicant. Before turning the floor over to him, are there any questions for me?
I have one for you, Jacqueline. That map can come back up. There's an Oklahoma-shaped section up there on the northeast corner that according to what's in front of me is currently O, but it's showing as P up there, but it's not part of the defined space. Can you explain that for me?
Correct. So that's its own parcel. So the legal description that is being defined is that in the hash and that O that's there now is a separate parcel. And then what was projected on the comprehensive plan, it was a stretch since it was all a medical.
Okay.
So it was proposed for that.
Got it. Thank you.
So one more question, please, because I understand that Stillwater Medical is reserving a right to come back and use that property for something in the future. Is that correct?
I'm going to leave that to Stephen to address.
All I can say is that's what was in the paper. And would that require rezoning again?
No. So the medical facility is a public entity, so therefore they can build.
Okay. Thanks.
And further questions for staff? This time, I'll open the public hearing. Do have Mr. Ghost signed up to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates, 113 East 8th Avenue. Like Jackie said, here on behalf of Stillwater Medical requesting this rezoning from Office and Ag to Public. This was really triggered through the review process for the soccer fields to allow that use. If we didn't do this, we'd have to do a specific use permit, and since Stillwater Medical is owning or retaining ownership of this, and it's just basically a ground lease for the soccer fields, it made sense for consistency, like Jackie said, among their other properties and to cover the use of the soccer field. So that area to the northeast, there's separated by a drainage channel, but that's where Aquatics is, so.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, councilors?
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. Was anyone else here planning to speak on this item? All right, at this time, I will close the public hearing. Is there a recommendation, Jacqueline?
Yes, there is. Planning Commission recommended approval, a vote of four to zero.
Thank you so much, councilors.
Motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. Please vote. An item is approved, a vote of five to zero.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight is general orders, 8A, the Henderson Golf Annual Report from Michael Henderson.
Hello. My name is Michael Henderson. I'm the Principal of Henderson Golf Management. Henderson Golf Management is an Oklahoma limited liability company based out of Edmond. This family-owned golf company has employed over 120 people in 2022 while operating facilities in Stillwater and Edmond. Our past client list includes golf courses in Perry, Cushing, Tulsa, Guthrie, Broken Arrow, Bristow, Stroud, Norman, and Dallas. Our company goal is to assist municipalities or owners in achieving their financial and operational results through the following services of golf course ownership, total facility management, monthly golf course management, agronomy plan development, facility renovations, business plan development, and as needed consulting. Over the past year, in 2022, we have many community programs in place, which include extensive junior golf programs, which we started in 2010 when I was still a city employee, and couldn't be happier that last year, the Stillwater High School won the state championship. So a lot of these kids that we got started when they were eight or nine years old have matured into, we have a couple that are going to go play Division One golf, and so we couldn't be happier with that. But also including with that, we run the Lakeside Junior Golf Championship. We host the South Central PGA Stillwater Junior Championship with a home course for the Stillwater Public School golf teams, and we're also designated a PGA family course, which is a designation to help beginners come out and play at a beginner level with a different set of golf tees. We also run clinics, camps, personal golf instruction performed by PGA professionals for all genders, abilities, and ages. Our instructors have been awarded over the past few years with the South Central PGA Teacher of the Year, the South Central PGA Player Development Award winner, and the facility's also been named the Junior Golf Leader for the South Central PGA for consecutive times, which has been really, really nice. The South Central PGA is the PGA section which covers the states of Oklahoma, Arkansas, and Kansas. So it's a big deal to get these awards, and we couldn't be more proud of our staff that have gone out and done this. 2022, we welcomed back the Special Olympics, which is always a fun time of the year for us to get started. We also host the, we're the home facility for the Stillwater Women's Golf Association. So we get a nice demographic of people coming out and enjoying the facility. We got kids of all ages, demographics, and it's just been great. We have weekly scrambles and other events throughout the year to increase participation and golf course usage. Over the course of a year, we will host about 30 private events, fundraisers, golf tournaments, including the United Way, the SBCA, GCSAA, OSU alumni events, OSU paternal events, and we've also held some professional events as well in conjunction with the high school regional championships and local championships as well. We're also happy to announce that we're going to host the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce event this year, first time. So we'd like to thank Elaine Zanotti for bringing that to us. We really look forward to it, and it's coming around the corner, September 9th, I believe. And this is a little something from Brian that was up here, but past and future capital improvements that we plan on doing at the golf course. We're constantly rotating out our mechanical fleet, which is a very costly deal. We put 60 new golf carts in in 2022 that feature GPS systems with integrated Bluetooth speakers and also the ability to communicate with the golf shop to order food, drink, or anything else you may need out on the golf course. This was delivered in fall of '21 and was put into place and used in 2022. We've also purchased a new beverage cart, range picker, range cart, and then we're constantly flipping out our maintenance equipment as it starts to run out throughout the year. Other things we do is we're constantly replacing the irrigation system with heads, valves, control boxes, and all of that stuff, and everything at the facility is completely operational. We have no facility breakdown in any way at this point, so we've been very fortunate that we've been there. Annual chemical and fertilizers, that's a big odd item for us, that we typically put about $40,000 to $60,000 worth of chemicals and fertilizers on the golf course annually, and then we also take care of the landscape surrounding the golf shop, the entrance. 2022, we had 41 part-time and full-time employees employed at the golf course, and we have three PGA associates and two more entering the PGA education program in the spring once they graduate. We've had, since COVID, some extraordinary growth as far as golf course usage. We've had more people going outside and enjoying the golf course, and I'm going to have to go and apologize. Our 2022 numbers are incorrect on this graph. We actually are going to get closer to almost 40,000 rounds that year. We had a little miscommunication when we put that on there, so I apologize for that. Adding in the golf instruction, the program participants, facility usage, high school usage, comped rounds, we're going to hit about 40,000 rounds this year as well, and paid rounds have almost doubled since 2017. This trend is still continuing to happen, and so for the first half of 2023, we are up again, and we're going to possibly break that 40,000 round, which I'm not sure if that's ever happened in the history of the golf course, but we're excited about it. Our agreement with the city is we are at a $900,000 income threshold, but once we exceed $900,000, we go back into a split with revenues with the city. We've never achieved that. And so when Melissa had asked for those numbers back in June, I mistakenly quoted her that we were right at $900,000, and we realized today when we were preparing the report that was not the case. We actually did $965,000, so this is the first time we've ever given a check back to the city. And through the first half of this year, it looks like we're going to do a million dollars this year if things continue along the way. So we are trending in the right direction. We're still matching our expenses with our revenue, so we're making sure all the money that is coming in is going right back into the facility to make sure it's feasible, and when times do get rough, that we have the equipment, we have everything that we need that we're not going to have to scramble for in a year and a half, so a year to get to. This $952,000 was an increase of $70,000 from the year before and $120,000 from 2012. When, since the start of the public-private partnership, I believe our revenues were about $600,000, so we're about 60% up since we began this program. And with that, we're contributing about $80,000 to $85,000 in sales tax to the municipality, the county, and the state as well. Let's see here. One of the important things that we're really proud of is we did this by lowering fees. The average municipal green fee in card is about $42 statewide, and we're at $30. And so even with the inflation, all the rise of cost of goods, employment costs, we're still able to maintain the facility, operate it, and we haven't had to touch prices this year. We don't look like we're going to do it in 2023. If we do, it may go up like a dollar, but everything, we're going to be well below the average cost of what it costs to play golf at any municipal facility, 18-hole facility with this population in the state or higher. We really think that the golf course is just an indispensable asset to the quality of life in Stillwater, and we could do things to make more money. We could raise rates, but we start to alienate certain demographics that can't come out and play, and so we're really cost-conscious of when we're setting these prices of who we're going to push away, who we're going to bring in. And so our number one thing is to have our expenses match our revenues, but still be able to continue the golf course and be able to fuel these capital expenditures like the $400,000 cart purchase and all these pieces of equipment, because mores have almost doubled in price in the last four years. Gasoline, I mean, everything you can think of is just, as you guys are fully aware of running the city budget, it's just getting more and more expensive, and we've been able to do that. I've got a couple individuals here with me today. This is Dylan Wasson. He's our onsite manager, and he's going through the PGA program as well. He's almost finishing, and to his right, or his left, or right, is Riley Light, and she's our operations manager, and she handles all of our HR and everything else, and they've been a big part of it. Dylan's worked for me since he was, I think, a freshman in college. He started off doing carts, and we've still got him, and Riley was the same way that we picked her up early, and we're just, we have just a tremendous group of people out there, and we couldn't be happier with the way things have gone. One of the struggles we have had was this past year, we had a stretch of weather between December 21st and Christmas, where we got down to some negative 18 wind chills. It was below zero. So we had one of the worst winter kills the state of Oklahoma has seen, and I can't remember. These things typically happen about every 10 years. We've been hit with it twice in three out of the last four years. So we are resprigging all the two fairways that we lost, we're getting the surrounds done, and we're really, we're in much, much better position than a lot of our neighboring golf courses, because, as you can tell, the numbers don't lie. The people are still coming out and playing, and they're starting to increase, and so we couldn't be more pleased, and we hope everybody else is too. So if anybody has any questions, I'd love to field them and answer them.
Hey, Michael, councilors?
Councilors, any questions?
I just want to comment, I can remember a decade or more, there were a lot of complaints, or some complaints from the community about the black hole of expenses going into the golf course.
We still get the complaints.
But I will say that I don't hear what I used to hear, and it's being managed really well, and I just want to thank you for the great job you're doing out there.
Well, I appreciate it. It was my start, and it's not about making money. I mean, it's really, it's really, it's been a pleasure for me to be able to stay here, and as the company's grown and still just be a part of it and have such great employees to take care of it, that we couldn't be more pleased with where we are.
I think this is a great example of just a perfect public-private partnership, and I agree with one of your comments was that it's an indispensable asset for the community, and I think for a community this size, it is critical that we have a golf course that's a public course that people, anyone can go play.
It's difficult with four courses, with this size population, there's a lot of competition, and we've, you know, we've kind of dug out our niche and where we are in that market. I think we've done a pretty good job of capturing that revenue.
Is the high school team still playing for free out there?
When they're with the team, they are. We had a junior program years ago, we let all kids under the age of 18 come out and play when they were playing with somebody, but as we've started to get busier and busier, we can't do that. We still have, we're doing free, what was it?
The clinic for the ladies?
So we've got, we do some free clinics for the ladies. We do some other things that we do for the community, and when the golf course, when the kids are playing with the schools, then they're out there playing for free. But we also don't want to leave anybody behind. So if it ever becomes a financial obstacle for somebody to go out there and play, we've made some accommodations to help everybody out, because, you know, like we all, all golfers typically start on the municipal golf course, and they work their way up to hopefully playing on the OSU team at some point.
Well, the golf team doesn't have a real big budget, so thank you for doing that.
Yes, appreciate it.
Excellent. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate the report. Appreciate the work you're doing. Item 8B, we have an update on the Block 34 construction project. Mr. Moore's going to get us started here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a very exciting night. We have an exciting announcement, and we are talking about the final funding donation, the final design and the construction timeline for Block 34. As you know, determining what Block 34 could be for our community has been a struggle through the last decade. When Mr. Irby pledged his first gift to us back in January of '22, he kind of took the lead. He did take the lead in funding the architecture and design for the block. And through this last year and a half, it's been an incredible effort of that Block 34 design team and our city staff working together and figuring out the best plan for the block. And so the final designs are stunning, and we're going to share that here in a little bit. Jim Beckstrom is going to come up in a bit and do a presentation to share the images and details for the final Block 34 design. But we could not be here ready to move forward on the construction of this project without the generous gifts from Kicker, the Irby family, and Simmons Bank. The major announcement tonight to be celebrated this evening is the supplemental donation agreement that you council just approved on consent tonight, which details an additional $3 million gift from Kicker for this project. And, you know, when you look around the country, you see that other communities are having success and able to build these community gathering spaces like this, like Block 34, and it's being made possible by the local donations of individuals and local corporations. And so it's such a blessing that we have this gift of Block 34 being given to our community from Kicker and Simmons, and, you know, we have this community asset that our community's going to be able to use for live music, to socialize, to experience cultural events. And so I want to invite Mr. Irby up to the podium to share his thoughts on the project and give you all, council, a chance to share gratitude. It's definitely a reflection of Steve's character and how he asked us not to make too much of a deal about the overall amount of donation that he is giving to our community, but for reasons to possibly stir on or spur on others to give to community quality of life projects like this, and just to give recognition where it's due, I will share that the amount of pledged and in-kind gifts to Block 34 Construction and Programming from the gentleman in front of you now totals over $7 million. This is a huge. So thank you, Mr. Irby. Thank you for your incredible gift and blessing to our community, and so I'll hand it over to you.
You bet. Well, I'm glad to be here speaking before you, and just, I think you said it all, so really, there's not a lot left to say, but it's an exciting project that we've been working on for quite some time. And back before COVID, Jim Beckstrom approached me. He's been working on this project much longer than I have about a van shell, and we talked about that, and then COVID hit, and so the project just kind of died, and we didn't exactly forget about it, but it was just sitting there. And then after COVID, a lot of different things happened. Our business did really well during COVID. We were fortunate there, and started thinking about Block 34 again and got in touch with Jim, and came up with an idea to go ahead with it and hired an architect that I'd used on the Kicker building there that I really respected and thought he could do a fantastic job there. So you're going to get to see some of that tonight, of what he's designed, and several involved landscape architects, different people involved in it. But just really happy to announce that we are fully funded, and of course, we hope that our contractor agrees with that. If we can get a good bid, we're good to go on the project, and really appreciate what the city's done, jumping in there with doing 8th Street and Duncan, and I think that's really going to make the project really pristine, you know, having great streets around it and parking areas and things like that. So the, so I want to thank the city, and, you know, I've been really pleased working with the city and with Will and Brady and the whole bunch. Everybody has just been great, and so it's really a pleasure to work on a project where people are cooperative and interested and want to move ahead. And so I want to thank you. I want to thank Simmons Bank also, and shut off my phone, for their contribution, and we have a beautiful pavilion that's going to go there. Working on getting some renderings of that tonight. We'll show you renderings of the stage, but really classy design, classic design, I would say. And so we're just really looking forward to this new project and getting it going. I think it's going to be a catalyst in the city for development, for economic development, for businesses in the area, the downtown area, and I think it's going to be a great improvement for quality of life in Stillwater and hopefully a place that people can enjoy, enjoy their families and music and a safe place to congregate. So I'm going to turn it over to Jim Beckstrom. Jim has been the motivator on this thing, and he's the chairman of the Stillwater Community Center Foundation and also the chairman of our Block 34 Development Architectural Committee that we've been working on this. And Jim is a guy that's feet on the street, and he makes it happen, and I really appreciate him, so going to turn it over to Jim.
Well, Steve, before Jim comes up, I would like to say, and I shared this with you beforehand, but I want to say it publicly, that I was an early skeptic of this project, not because I thought it was a bad project, but because I envisioned a 10-year draw on the road with $200,000 in that bank and an undeveloped plot, which is sort of where we've been before with Block 34. And we've certainly had donations from others, Bank First and Simmons Bank and probably some others, but without the generosity of you and your family and your business, this wouldn't be happening.
Yeah.
And so I want to thank you at this point of the meeting.
We're happy to do it. I hope to enjoy it myself, you know, so. We had got inspired by the downtown area in Boulder, Colorado, where my son was living, and the amphitheater they have, the farmer's market, and the park and all that, and just thought that would be great to have in Stillwater. And it looks like, you know, Lord willing, that's going to happen. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's a pleasure and an honor to be here today. I'm along with you. I just can't thank this gentleman enough and Simmons and the city for making this all possible and kind of allowing this thing to move forward. It takes a village. It takes, everybody had to be pulling in the same direction for this to happen, and it happened. The task force started 2017. The city for decades has, the city for decades has approached something downtown of substance, and about 20 years ago, you started aggregating ownership of Block 34 and started creating the opportunity for Stillwater's Town Square, finally a meeting place for the town. It's, I was on the task force they formed in 2017, and we had over 36 public meetings and took input from the public. We had town halls, and that aggregated into something that created some excitement in the city and thankfully hit a mark with Mr. Irby. So we have a concept that got some traction. Kevin Fowler was on that initial task force, and then he was replaced by Pat Zimmerman, and under Pat Zimmerman, we started fundraising. The design was a team effort. We have had the city involved and other stakeholders kind of from the get-go, and so this wasn't done, and don't think of a room where you slide the pizza under the door and a design comes out 18 months later. That's not what happened here. And so I'm just going to start walking through the design. I'm also, I'm chairman of Stillwater Community Center Foundation, as Steve mentioned, also chairman of the Block 34 Architecture Development also chairman of the Block 34 Architecture Development Committee, which was formed by agreement with the city to provide oversight for the block, basically forever until we decide you don't want to do it anymore. So we're, we're doing our best to keep things going. We've done some successful fundraising and I can talk about that a little bit more as we get into the presentation. The, this is an overview of the block. This, if you looked at the work the Block 34 Task Force did, this isn't horribly different. It's actually 90 degrees out of phase from what we did and that was driven by the architect's guidance that said, look, I think for summer events, you want that stage in the southwest corner because your setting sun in the summer is northwest. So that way you're going to get shielding. Nobody's looking into the sun. It's actually off everybody's shoulder in the summertime, which is the primary usage period of, of a facility like this. In the northeast corner is a pavilion. So you've got these things kind of benchmarking a very massive green space. For context, I don't, if, if any of you are familiar with Guthrie Green, this is actually bigger than Guthrie Green. This green space is almost an acre. It'll accommodate almost 5,000 people, plus or minus. And I think one other thing I want to point out, it was mentioned earlier, and actually I heard it mentioned in the golf, this is a public facility. There, there's not a fence around this. There's not an entrance fee. You can walk into this facility from every side. Every entrance is open and welcoming, so it's a public space. Kind of working around clockwise, the northeast corner has the biggest plaza. The large pavilion is named, going to be named the Simmons Pavilion. And that's a diagram of it there. It's an open building. There are no closed structures per se. We do have, of course, some closed rooms. There are, the pavilion includes three bathrooms, public restrooms, and it also includes a utility slash storage room. So we do have some doors with locks on them. But by and large, it's, it's an open facility. The stage is, is the same way. Kind of working down along that, you see the big, the big enter, the big sign there. We're going to get into that in a minute. But that is the Block 34 logo. We actually had a person that specialized, a company that specializes in this. And after some discussion, we actually talked to the council about this maybe a year or so ago. They said, no, Block 34 is probably the coolest thing you can call this. So why don't you do that? And I said, okay, let's do that. So, so we went with the Block 34 logo. It's distinctive. We're the only Block 34. So people are going to know, okay, it's Stillwater, right? That's the logo. You're going to see it on every corner. The main sign, the big, big, biggest Block 34 logo is going to be on the northeast corner. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. As we go around the corner, we've got a big gathering space, kind of, kind of like a beer garden, south of the pavilion on the eastern side. As we walk our way around, we've got some park areas in the southeast corner, which is Ninth and Husband. And then along Ninth, kind of in the midway along the block is a water feature, cool-off place for kids and grownups in the summer. I've seen everybody in those things. But it's also an art feature. It's designed to have varying art jets, varying water jets with multicolor lighting. So you actually can use it as an art feature as well as a water play area. Moving around to the, to the south, to the southwest, there's an arched walkway along the western side of the block. We call that Musicians Walk and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. And you can see the Kicker Soundstage. You're going to see some amazing views of that here in just a second. And along the Musicians Walk are, are, there's accommodations right now in the base designed to accommodate 11 musician recognition features. And these features are going to respect musicians that are no longer with us. And, and there's actually a musician recognition committee that is going to, is making decisions about what's going to be included on that. But they are funded 100% by private donations. They are not in the base project. So we've got incremental fundraising going on to fund those and I'll talk about those more in a minute. If you have any questions, just throw something at me, okay? All right. So here is the Kicker Soundstage. All right. This is actually a really big structure. Not overwhelming, but big. It's big enough to accommodate an orchestra. So this is not a little one-band shell. This is actually able to handle a pretty big act. It has, fitted into the ceiling are hoisting bars. So you can lift very substantial sound equipment and lighting equipment in there to support your acts. And we also have some loading, lifting points on the outside of the stage to accommodate speaker lifts. Much bigger speakers than what's seen on this diagram. We're actually basically, they're basically able, able to lift an array of speakers that goes all the way to the floor. Okay. So it's, it's, it's the real deal. We've had experts in the field help us in this design, folks from OSU. City technicians have been involved in the design. We've had, we've had the stakeholders who are going to end up operating this, involved in the design process all the way along. So this, this hasn't been done and then dumped on the op staff. They've been involved in the design process. So this is, this is a view from the green. And then this is a view from the, from Ninth Avenue. So it's, what's really cool, I think you're going to notice, is that the, the actual landscaping and the feel at the ground level is very natural. And then you've got these kind of magnificent modernistic features that accent. And so I, I think the look of the block is, is just amazing. You'll see a lot of zero scape gardening and they, they've gone, they focused on maintenance. We involved Stillwater op staff all along in the spec-ing of what kind of grass, what kind of gardens, what kind of landscaping, so that it's going to be sustainable, you know, so you can keep operating it forever. Again, if you've got any questions, just jump. And you can see the pavilion in the north. I'm sorry, I keep pointing just back. Off to the right there, you see the pavilion on the other side of the green. Okay.
Well, this facility, the soundstage, have any permanent underlying equipment or is it all brought in for events?
It's all brought in, right now it's all brought in for that. So that, there's, I mean, there's going to be a natural evolution. I mean, it's some, you know, it's going to ebb and flow depending on what we think that the market is and what needs to happen there. But, but I will say one other thing is that there is a substantial amount of power coming into this facility. Nobody's going to need to run generators to put on a show at this, at this stage. There is a big transformer just off, off the screen to the left, and there's a control room with substantial amount of power in there to handle very large sound systems and lighting systems. So now is the time to do that sort of thing, right? It's, 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 gets real expensive to do it later. So in the northeast corner is the Simmons Pavilion. What you're looking at here, this is kind of a view. You can see Stillwater News Press off to the left there. You're looking towards the stage. So you're looking direct diagonal across the block. And there is, we actually leaned into the block theme. So you'll notice that we've got a donation block in the middle of the plaza. So we, we kind of lean into the, you'll see these cubes around that are used for signage that are also kind of leaning into the block theme. And then here is a closer up view of, of the sign. Hoff, Was, Hoffu Waska Design is the company out of Tulsa that did the design work on the signs. These signs are going to be bulletproof. I mean, these are, these are designed to be around for a really, really long time. The inner part where you see the white is going to have LED lighting and it's going to have Lexan, which is literally bulletproof plastic around it. So these things are really designed to hold up for a long, long time. Here's a Musicians Walk that I, we walked, talked about. It was behind the stage and this is a better view of the musician recognition features. Our consultant has used this technology for other big projects with really great success. These are printed. The recognition features have this panel that is going to have a photo or an image reflecting the music genre or group musician. In this case, you're seeing a photo of Otto Gray and the Oklahoma Cowboys. Okay, that's just what you're looking at there. And then there's a ride up. This is actually also going to be pressed in between two layers of bulletproof plastic. So again, we're getting back, if you catch on to a theme here, you're, you're on it, okay? And we also have the lighting. So at night, these are going to be lit up as you go along the walk. Presently, we have three of these funded. We are in fundraising right now. You're probably going to hear about some concerts coming up really soon that are going to be fundraising concerts to help get some money together for some of these features as well. So stay tuned. And if you have any compelling desire to donate, just reach out. You know how to reach me and we'll get you in there. We have entrance sign, the other three entrances, you have the big entrance in the northeast corner, and then each other entrance has got this other, this alternative sign, entrance sign, and the panel in there is for posters. So for upcoming events, any kind of communications you want to make to, you know, the city, that's where you do it. And here we're looking at, this looks like we're looking at back through the stage is where this one is. This is in the south. Yeah, there's the Stillwater News Press on the right-hand side there. Again, these are lit. They've got the same lighting. In, in the southeast corner, we have some alternates that are, at this point are funded. These parks are now funded. But there's a, there's a kind of reviso on this one. And I, I've got to be careful because I don't know where the city is in the process of this. But the, the play area requires fall protection. And fall protection requires drainage. And for us to have, be able to put this playground in with its kind of climbing features, et cetera, we actually need to have a storm drain in Duncan Street. So we're, fingers crossed, that's going to happen. But this, this has been designed, we're going, it's included in the bid process. So if, if we have a way to get the water away from the play area, this thing happens. But regardless, we have this play area. So we have a music, music play area right adjacent to it. And this doesn't need any drainage. So this is going to happen regardless. And this, this is funded. So this is a place for kids to make some music. And that is kind of it for design. I do want to say thanks to the, it's been a team effort. As I mentioned earlier, the city of Stillwater has been fantastic. They've been involved across the organization, done a great job, I think, of engaging the key stakeholders in the design. The folks are going to operate the utilities, even waste management was involved. I mean, that whole thing, we've kind of gone through what we think is kind of everything that needs to be thought about. Of course, we will have forgotten some things. That's unavoidable. But I think we've done everything possible to get a great design together. The musician recognition team is fantastic. Just to give you a sense of comfort of who's on the musician recognition team, we have Mr. Erby, who's been in the music industry in Stillwater for what, five years? Five years or so? Five, yeah, five years. Okay, anyway, a few years. We have Dr. Hugh Foley. I don't know if you've ever heard of Hugh Foley, but he actually is Stillwater resident and wrote the Oklahoma Music Guide, which is an 800-page-thick encyclopedia of Oklahoma music. And he is on our team. Nobody knows more about Oklahoma musicians, Native American or otherwise, than Hugh Foley. And he's on our team to kind of help us figure out who should be recognized. Monica Taylor, I don't know if you've heard of Monica Taylor from Simran Bree, she's on the team. Dr. Mark Perry, who's the director of the Music Industry Department, he's on the team. I'm on the team. Michelle Charles is on the team. I'm a non-voting member. I'm basically secretary and can't hurt her. But it's, it's, it's a great, they're doing a great job. And thanks to Stephen Ghost. Did he leave? He escaped, didn't he? He came on early and has been a huge help to us. Ghost and Associates have been fantastic. With that, I think I'm done. I've been at this about 18 months and the city now has the design in their hands. So off to the races. Any questions? And it's out for bid now, right? It's my understanding. So the city, just maybe some process. So, so the city is contract, is bidding and contracting the project. I'm just kind of coordinator. So I, I think Brady probably be better. It's my understanding.
That's right. So because this is a complex project, you have the inside the block is what we call the, you know, the, the donations that we've received for the, what you're seeing tonight on those design features. So that's estimated to be around $8 million inside the block. And then we have the public improvements that council has approved that are going to go on those streets surrounding the block and the sidewalks, new lighting, new water sewer, and also that storm drain feature that we were budgeting for based on council's comments last time it was before you. So all in, it's a, you know, estimated $13 million project. It's out for bid right now. And we had, we've had a great response on the pre-bid meetings. And right now, in those pre-bid documents, it states a one-year timeline for completion. So that can always be amended after we hear from multiple contractors. But we're looking at groundbreaking this fall, correct, in October, and hopefully seeing this completed in that winter '24 season, which is, would be incredible if we could have it open for the pre-spring weather in 2025.
Amen.
Yep.
Thank you for the opportunity to be part of this.
No, it's been, it's been a joy to work with Jim and Steve and the entire Block 34 design team, Ghost and Associates. It's, it's been a really great team effort. I don't, I don't say that lightly. It's, I think the fruits of it are going to show soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you to, to you, to your team, Mr. Erby. I mean, this is, as, as Council Clerk said a while ago, this is a decades-long process. And, and to have folks step up with the vision to see this through to the point it's at now is, is just, just absolutely fantastic for our community to see. And certainly you two, Pat, so many people throughout the last few years have, have stepped up and contributed to get us to where we are. I, I'm just beside myself thinking about what it's, what that opening concert is going to be and, and how much this is going to bring to our community. And the comments about economic development, about visitor development. I mean, this is a, a game-changing sort of facility for our community. And cannot thank Steve Erby and Kicker and your family enough for your ability to see that and ability and willingness to support it and to fund it. And bringing along folks from Simmons Bank, bringing along folks from Bank First, other donors in our community. Can't wait to recognize all of those folks more as we get closer. But this is, this is really, really exciting. And I hope, I hope everyone out there shares that excitement that, that I know all of us up here do. So. When do bids open? August 16th. Mark your calendars. Get your bids in, contractors. Make them as low as you can.
That's right.
All right. Thank you all. We're going to move on to other important things that are probably not anywhere near as exciting as that, but still important. Let's see. Where am I? Item 8C, consider approval of the State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation Project Maintenance Financing and Right-Away Agreement for the Rails to Trails Project.
Yes, so.
Also exciting.
Yes, it is. It is exciting. So as you'll remember, back in November of 2022, city council authorized staff to develop and submit a grant application to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for their TA, which is their Transportation Alternative Grants Program. And the amount for our grant that was authorized was 1.2 million. On April 3rd of this year, the ODOT commissioners awarded 62 projects totaling more than 52 million for these active, or these alternative transportation projects for pedestrian bicycle facilities. And the great news is the city of Stillwater's Rails to Trails program, our grant application for the first 1.25 miles of that trail was awarded for the full amount of $1.2 million. So tonight before you is the, the initial contract from ODOT for the, the loan. It goes through the details of the loan. But again, just as a reminder to the public, this is for our Rails to Trails project. This is what we have proposed to ODOT, who owns our rail corridor, is to close the unused portion of the rail from Lakeview South. That two and a half miles could be closed at Lakeview, allowing full industry, all of our industries to the north to still use that rail and have the ability for it to operate. Through a rail-to-trail conversion, we would become the, the trail manager and take over the maintenance and use this funding for the first 1.25 miles or from, I think Boomer Lake to McElroy. So we'll be able to create a new trail from Husband and Lakeview, heading over east towards the rail corridor and then heading down that first mile. And for anybody on a pretty day, I invite you to walk that. It's, it's a beautiful trail. And I can only imagine when we have it open and it's ADA accessible, it's going to be a great benefit for those in our community that love to ride their bikes, to run, to walk, or choose to live without a, you know, with other modes of transportation. So it's going to be a big blessing to our community. It's exciting to have 1.25 million coming to our town for, for trails. town for, for trails.
I keep turning my mic off. That's really exciting too, Brady. Do you know a timeline on like the trail closing process? And have we heard when they abandon the rail and all that sort of stuff?
Yep. Through the rail banking process, that, that can take some time. We have heard that ODOT has retained a attorney, a special attorney, to help with the abandonment process. That timeline is, is not set because that does take, it is, it is a process to go through. As far as once this contract is approved, we will set up, or we already have set up interviews for the engineers that ODOT allows us to choose to interview for this project. So the engineering and design will begin soon. And as the rail banking process, the legal process of closing the rail line south of Lakeview takes place, we'll begin to, we'll hopefully have the design fully complete.
Awesome. Councillors, any questions?
I just want to thank Brady for his involvement in this because you were there from day one and really drove this project to the background. Thank you.
Brady has absolutely taken this and run with it. And we wouldn't be anywhere, you know, with this project at all without your work. So we absolutely appreciate that. What's your recommendation for us, Brady?
I have a motion. It's a motion to approve the State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation Project Maintenance Financing and Right-Away Agreement for project number J3-7997004CI. And this is for the Stillwater Rails to Trails Project.
Councillors?
I move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Please vote. That is approved with a vote of five to zero. Next up, item 8D, consideration discussion, possible action regarding the performance-based efficiency contract with JCI. Ms. Cardley?
So this item is a follow-up to last week's update on the city's performance-based efficiency project. And just a little bit of background from last week's discussion, the city approved a performance contract with Johnson Controls and also approved project financing with Bank of America. However, prior to the city being able to close on that financing, the state treasurer published a list of prohibited financial institutions pursuant to the provisions of the Energy Discrimination Elimination Act. And once a financial institution is listed, the city is prohibited from contracting with that bank unless a specific exception in the act can be met. So the city had previously reached out to the Attorney General's Office as well as the state charger for guidance on compliance with that act. So prior to tonight's meeting, I was prepared to say despite staff and legal efforts, we really haven't made any progress. However, 10 minutes before tonight's meeting, I did receive a phone call from the Attorney General's Office that they were working on finalizing a letter in response to our request for guidance. I have received that letter. And again, I received it right before the meeting. I have read the letter. And they have provided some guidance on our particular project situation, and it does indicate favorable support from the Attorney General that the city may meet an exception to the act. So I provide that to you as an update and your information. And that being said, I would probably like an opportunity to kind of maybe read that letter a little bit more and see kind of really where that leaves us. So I'll open up for questions on status.
Councillors, any questions?
That was pretty self-explanatory.
Well, I mean, I, I want to ask you questions about what it means, that, what it says in the letter, but I want to also give you time to actually figure out what it says.
Right, right.
So it would be best to just wait till August 7th?
That would be fine. I'm just, one of the specific exceptions in the act is, you know, a city, if you can meet an exception that the services are not otherwise reasonably available from another provider, then you can proceed with contracting with Bank of America. And so that is what we've been working through. But again, Bank of America also has to be agreeable to entering the transaction. So we would have to make that finding and then proceed. And again, project financing is kind of, you know, one prong of this. We still have, to make sure, you know, this delay has created some other challenges with the existing performance contract because the contract price was conditioned upon entering, issuing a notice proceed by a date that's already passed. So we'll just need to make sure that we can kind of review where it stands in totality.
Well, I would just first offer our thanks, or my thanks, to Attorney General Drummond's office for being willing to get engaged and let us know what, I mean, the Attorney General is the one that's given the power to enforce the act.
Yes.
And so unfortunately, we have a legislator or a legislature who has passed an act that none of us really knows what it means. And so we had to wait for the Attorney General at some level to tell us how they would, they would enforce it. So I appreciate their willingness to do that. I would like for us, when this comes back up, when this comes back in our next meeting, to have that be an item where we are saying something definitive about what's happening with this contract. I want it to either be, yep, this is good, we're ready to go. We've talked to JCI about whatever the other contract issues are. We're like, it's time to move forward, or it's time to not move forward. Because this has been a saga of unfortunately not, I don't think our making, although everybody probably plays a little bit of a role. And it's time for us to pick which direction we're moving with it. I'm really happy that the Attorney General seems to be saying that this doesn't apply to us, because I tend to agree that I don't think it should. But we need to make a decision at the next meeting based on your analysis and based on the additional contract issues that we've got to get figured out. I don't think we need, do we need a motion on the item to do anything with it?
Nope. We'll just bring it back on the next agenda if there are no further questions.
Councillors, anything further? All right. That takes us to item nine on the agenda, ordinances. On second read, we have ordinance 3524, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 1017 and 1109 West Ninth Avenue, 1022, 1024, 1104, 1110, 1122, and 1124 West 10th Avenue, and 920 through 924, South Jefferson Street from small lot, single-family residential district, RSS, to two-family residential RT.
I move to adopt ordinance 3524.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3524 is adopted. Item 10 is appointments. We have three different boards that we have some openings on and some applicants for, or some renewals of. So I will start with the Building Trades Board. We have one vacancy, which requires someone with experience in the electrical industry. We don't currently have any applications on file for that position on the Building Trades Board. So my first comment would just be to say that if you have experience in the electrical industry and you are interested in helping with building trades and with that process in the city, we would appreciate it if you would serve on the Building Trades Board. We do have a member, Kyle Kelty, whose term expires at the end of this month, and he has expressed his willingness to be reappointed. So I will move that we reappoint Kyle Kelty to another term on the Building Trades Board.
Second.
We have a motion. I was waiting for somebody else to make a motion, I guess.
Sorry.
We do have a motion and a second to appoint Kyle Kelty to a three-year term on the Building Trades Board. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that is approved. Next up, we have the Planning Commission. We have two terms that expire this month, Riley Williams and Jenna Phillips. They have both expressed their willingness to be reappointed to the Planning Commission, which is wonderful. We appreciate the service that they've provided so far and their willingness to continue. We do have one vacant seat with a few applicants, which I'm also very grateful for. I will move that we reappoint Riley Williams and Jenna Phillips to new terms and appoint Andrew Van Luven to a new term on the Planning Commission.
Second.
If a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, those appointments are made to the Planning Commission. For those, there were a couple of folks, and we'll reach out specifically, who had applied for consideration for the Planning Commission as well. We'll certainly reach out to those folks and ask them about other openings that we have on boards and commissions here at the city. And finally, we have position on the Board of Drainage Appeals. We have one vacancy with no applications currently on file. So maybe one of those folks who is interested in the Planning Commission would be interested in the Board of Drainage Appeals. But the terms of Matthew Mitchell, Daniel Storm, and Dr. Dale Daniel expired in June '22 and '23, and I will all have confirmed their willingness to be reappointed. So I'll move that we reappoint those three individuals to three-year terms.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? So expire, weren't two of these expired a year ago? So are they being appointed for the year they've already served plus two more years?
That is an excellent question. Does that, it's appointment as of the 20 sec, as of last, okay. So they will serve three years from June of '22.
Okay.
On, Matthew Mitchell and Daniel Storm will serve three-year terms that would expire in 2025. Dr. Dale Daniel would serve a term that expires in 2026.
Okay.
I will second that.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to these appointments. Please vote. Oh, that's me. Vote of five to zero, those appointments are approved. And we certainly appreciate all of these individuals for their willingness to serve on these very important boards and committees. If you have any interest in, in serving the city in these capacities or in others, please go to our website and look for openings on city boards and commissions. Next up, reports from the officers and the board. Ms. Cardley?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Moore?
I've actually got a couple. So as you know, weather changes affect our water utility infrastructure, you know, the extreme heat and the extreme cold that we see here in Oklahoma can have an effect on the soil around our main lines of pipes. And beginning yesterday evening and through the early hours of this morning, our Water Utilities Crew were able to repair a 24-inch, which is a very large water main line near the Cimarron Turnpike. I want to thank our director, James Driscoll, and the entire Water Utilities Team for their commitment to ensuring our customers have water, even if it means working around the clock and through the night and day in the extreme weather conditions. And so water was fully restored to our customers that by 5:00 a.m. this morning, one of, only one neighborhood really observed kind of low pressure through the night as they were working. And so I'm just grateful for our entire Water Utilities staff and our operations crews from Public Works to Electric that are so responsive whenever we need them. So also a bit of great news to add to the exciting news for tonight, we are launching our new City of Stillwater website tomorrow. So Tuesday, July 25th. The new website address is stillwaterok.gov. But our previous stillwater.org will still link and move over to the new website. It's exciting that we're, we really like the vendor that we've chosen, all the neat features that they have, you know, the menu and things should be much easier to navigate. There's a new search function. We have a search bot, or a chat bot that you can communicate with, and it'll kind of work you through the website. As with any new launch, I'm sure there'll be some kinks that will work out. There are additional modules that we'll be launching later in the year that are going to increase the productivity of the website, even for our minutes, for our meetings and agendas moving forward. So there's a lot of new features to come, but we are launching the new site tomorrow. So if you have a chance, check it out, it's stillwaterok.gov. I just want to give thanks, I'm going totally off script, by the way, but I want to give thanks to Dawn and her team and the Communications and Marketing Team. They've, they've worked so hard on this. You all met Billy at a meeting recently. Billy is so fun to have in the office. He's a great, great guy, a great staff member. And he, him and Dawn and the whole Communications Team have done an excellent job of putting this new website together.
That is exciting. And I'm, I'm glad that we're getting a .gov address. I feel like one of the first things I did when I was elected mayor was sign something that certified we were a government agency so that we could get the .gov. Patty, I think, I think that was one of the first things I signed. So only, you know, coming on six years later, we're, we're getting to it.
So will city email addresses be affected? Are we still going to be .org?
We are still going to be .org, but we are looking into what it takes to convert that all over to stillwaterok.gov.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Don't forget to participate in the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce Purchase on Perkins Road campaign, where patrons can potentially win $1,000 cash prizes while they are shopping local. While Perkins Road US 177 roadway construction project is a necessity, this Shop Local campaign helps show much-needed support to the businesses located along this roadway. Per the Chamber, to enter, just visit a store on Perkins Road and make a purchase. Next, scan the QR code on the receipt and fill out a survey to enter the contest. For more information, visit the Chamber's Facebook page and their website at stillwaterchamber.org. Such a valuable campaign, I know, for the businesses over there that are weathering this long road construction. It's, every time I go over there, I think of them, and think how hard this must be for them. So thank you to the Chamber for, for getting this campaign going for them.
Thank you. Counselor Hawkins?
The city is accepting applications for citizen representatives to serve on various committees, as we just heard, including the Board of Adjustment, Planning Commission, Building Trades Board, and Board of Drainage Appeals. These committees are essential for increased development and infrastructure projects within our community. The position on the Building Trades Board, Board, needs, it's a mouthful, Buildings Trade, Building Trades Board needs to be filled by someone active in the electrical trade. The position on the Board of Drainage Appeals needs to be filled by someone with knowledge of hydrology, engineering, stormwater management, or related field, and have no economic interest in the development or construction industries. If you would like to get involved in your local government and help make Stillwater even greater, please consider serving on one or more of these committees. For more information and to apply online, go to stillwater.org/citizenboards.
Or stillwaterok.gov.
Or stillwaterok.gov.
If you're hearing this tomorrow.
Yes.
Counselor Clerk?
Mark your calendars for Oklahoma Tax Free Holiday Weekend on August 4th through the 6th. During this time, sales of eligible items are exempt from state, city, county, and local municipal sales tax. Retailers are required to participate in this three-day tax holiday and may not collect sales and use taxes on qualified footwear and clothing items priced less than $100. We ask our community members to please shop locally and take advantage of this savings weekend here in Stillwater. For more information about the holiday and to find a list of exempt items, go to tax-ok.gov.
Thank you, Counselor. That's a good program. Back-to-school shopping is starting.
Absolutely.
Counselor Harden?
Stillwater Police will host National Night Out on Tuesday, August 1st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Southern Woods Park. This is an annual community building opportunity for Stillwater family, friends, and emergency responders and other organizations to strengthen crime prevention awareness. There'll be games, food, fun. So please save the date. We hope to see everyone at the event.
It's always a great event, and we appreciate the Police Department for helping put that on. I have several updates on our larger transportation projects around town for those of you who may have driven here in the last several months. The Husband Street Bridge is set to be complete in mid to late August. It's currently on schedule. Really hoping that it gets done before school, but if not, right after. The Third Street Bridge at Third and Perkins is set to be complete by the 1st of November, which is the schedule there as well. The 12th Street closure from Duncan to Duck has been delayed a bit by recent weather. Lots of rain we've gotten here. The new completion date for that roadway to be reopened is August 26th. Just a reminder, this construction project is for installation of the drainage culvert to help reduce flooding. Makes it a little ironic that it's been delayed by all the rain. The North Perkins Road US 177 project that ODOT is doing along Perkins Road remains on schedule for all four lanes to be completed and opened by the end of August. ODOT has ensured us that the ABA accessible bus stops will be included in, in that opening by the end of August. The 10-foot-wide sidewalks may not be completely finished by the time the roadway is complete, but they will follow shortly after. We greatly appreciate our business owners on Perkins who have weathered the roadway construction project, and also thanks to all the patrons who have continued to support those businesses, some of whom have been encouraged by the Chamber. And we appreciate community members who have been patient and kind throughout construction projects in the city. And as I keep telling people that it's better that you have to drive around construction than it would be if you had to drive over roads that weren't being repaired. So progress sometimes takes a little time. That is all we have on the city council agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the store city council is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for July 24, 2022. the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting for July 24, 2023. Trustees, motions, comments, action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. Next up, our Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Economic Development Report from Reagan Mitchell. Good.
Good. I've been here for almost a year, and it's the first time that I'm standing in front of you all at the horseshoe. I'm sorry. It's not by avoidance at all, just luck. Yeah, so I get to report to you all today for quarter three of 2023 what the Chamber has been up to in the vein of economic development. For the sake of transparency, Elaine and I have adopted the policy of responding to you all with efforts related to economic development within the contract agreement. It makes it easier for us to make sure that we're meeting the deliverables that were outlined in the contract. And hopefully, I'm not reading it on your end, so please let me know if this is not the case. It makes it easier for you all to tell if we are meeting the deliverables in a sufficient way. I have a section at the end of the presentation for comments or questions or feedback. But I would like to take you briefly through this slides deck presentation to tell you a little bit about what has been going on this quarter at the Chamber. First of all, thank you for trusting us. This contract newly enacted in July is a huge value add to the Chamber. I love what I do through the Chamber, and I'm able to do what I do because of you all trusting the Chamber to conduct the work of economic development on behalf of the city. So thank you. So like I said, this is a condensed report, kind of talking about the big highlights within that document that was sent over last week. It goes bullet by bullet through the outlined agreement. So big highlights at the state level. We submitted this quarter on Project Kazaah, which was a project that came down through the State Department of Commerce. The Site Selection Group was specifically interested in the Armstrong facility, which I know is high priority for us, getting that filled, making it less likely that it sits vacant for a long time because you get into building use issues if that happens. And so another submission on the Armstrong facility. Last quarter, we submitted economic impact analysis with the state projects that came down the pipeline. We asked for one of those with Project Kazaah, but they have not provided enough information just on the project level to provide an economic impact analysis that would be accurate. What I can tell you is that this project represents 482 new potential jobs at or above the base salary range. So that's amazing. Also, I can't tell you too much for the sake of privatization and what the Department of Commerce says we can share, but it is a manufacturing facility that's compatible with other things going on in the community. So I will say that. It would be a really attractive partner to what we have happening out at Rare Earth. Total, the Armstrong facility is in consideration for two state projects. Last quarter, I gave you details about a project called Project Mayflower. That state, that project was lost by the state in consideration. Operation costs, things like that, things that other states can incentivize were found to be more favorable. So we lost Project Mayflower as a state. And then also, a fun state update is that the Chamber was invited to speak on a panel by the Oklahoma City Regional Partnership at this year's Select Oklahoma Economic Development Conference. And so that's some really great traction and awareness and involvement on the Stillwater side and hoping to represent us well as a part of the Oklahoma City Regional Partnership. Big highlights continued. The Chamber is moving forward. Elaine's predecessor and people who preceded me on the economic development side submitted an application for roughly 1,000 acres west of the airport for a program called the Oklahoma Targeted Opportunities Program. What this is, is the Department of Commerce pairs communities with site selectors outside of the community that then, through the process of RFI data collection and also eventually an in-person site visit, provide us with data-driven recommendations for infrastructure developments, workforce strategies, and recruitment efforts to industries that are relevant to the land that we post. So we've decided to work with a group called the Site Selection Group, based out of Craneville, South Carolina. We've had preliminary discussions with them. Brady has been a part of those, Lauren with the Electric Utility, Melissa, and Elaine was a part of the interview process with me. We ended up going with them because they make recommendations based on infrastructure and workforce, which we thought would be the two most necessary elements to look at when we're looking at that land out by the airport with the coming construction of the terminal and the communication tower. One really amazing part of this program is that the costs of it are fully reimbursed by the Department of Commerce. So we will write them a check for the services that the Site Selection Group provides. And then, once we've submitted a receipt that shows that we paid them, they will fully reimburse us. And this also opens us up to funding opportunities for infrastructure developments that we're not able to get access to without participating in programs like this. So it's very exciting and very timely, especially with the coming construction of the terminal. BRE, so the hub. You guys are aware, the town is aware, and the Stillwater Facebook community page is aware that we closed on the hub and the land use development with the hub in May of this year. I would like to tell you all that the hub has selected an architecture group based out of Tulsa to work with. They're in negotiations with them on price, nailing down the finalities on that. They have groups coming in for interviews for the general contracting GM portion of that project, starting the first week of August. So we're on track for the groundbreaking that we projected, which was late fall, once we get rolling on the architectural renderings. And Brady and the city so graciously has been involved with all of our recruitment efforts with the hub. And so, yeah, they will be involved from the beginning. Anything that we get architectural rendering-wise will immediately go to Brady and Council for improvement and recommendation. Business retention visits in that same vein. This quarter, we're paid to Frontier Lanes and the team out there. The Chamber, and I'll say this, and this will be what I will say, is committed to being a listening ear and a compassionate voice for the businesses that might be affected in an adverse way because of the coming of this development. We're excited about the tribe's presence in our community. Kind of in the vein of Block 34, we believe that this is a value add for quality of life in our community. But we also recognize that there are hallmark businesses in our community that might be affected in a way that's not directly positive by the presence of something like this. And we are committed to listening to that and to hearing that out and to doing whatever we can do on our side to promote traction and business to those business owners. And then lastly, the Chamber and Meridian Technology Center are working together to create like small business programming. That's one of the things outlined in the CEDA agreement, is that we provide small business programming and programming for people that are in the ideation and imagination phase of their entrepreneurship journey. We're calling it Small Business University. It will be a six-week program spanning 12 weeks. It goes through all of the things related to small business ownership, from LLC versus corp, to financing, to marketing, to defining your target demographic and target audience. Starting in September, that program will run through December, and it will help like participants develop a full-fledged business plan with the ability to win money related to startup through the Chamber's Preferred Membership Fund. And so that's really exciting. We'll get to pitch that to the board on Thursday officially. But it's a really exciting partnership with Meridian and makes sense with what they have going on out at the Business Incubator to welcome those prospective business people into our community and into the Chamber. So we're excited about that partnership. And then lastly, this is a big thing, and Dawn has been a tremendous value add on this project for us, as she's been with the city website. I don't know the last time that any of you tried to navigate the economic development website that's hosted by the Chamber. It's pretty hard to navigate. And so one of the things moving forward that was priority for Elaine and I was to make it a resource for site selectors and for commercial realtors and for citizens, all under the banner of Grow Stillwater, which is in line with the branding and verbiage and communications that are coming out on the city side. So I wanted to show you, we're working with Bearden Services on this project. And I wanted to show you, they've designed a homepage with the search bar and the dropdown menus. It is not a full-fledged website, but we do have a hard launch date goal of September 1st. So hopefully, next time I'm in front of you guys, I will have a fully working website to show you allow, I think. Yeah, that's great. We love it when technology does what it's supposed to do. Okay, so this is what we're going to be working with, a much cleaner design, widescreen, pop-down menus. So starting here, we have this home screen. I will work with Rob Hill with SEMA to get drone footage that's Stillwater-specific. This is just a stock to show you guys what it will be once it's fleshed out. No, it's not. It looks like Stars Hollow, very Gilmore Girls-esque, but it's not Stillwater. We similarly have a chat bot that will go to an email that people can specifically ask questions related to economic development. That will be linked here, as well as all of our socials. And we don't have a Stillwater Economic Development LinkedIn, so I'll have to give that point of feedback. But all of our socials are linked up there as well. So Grow Stillwater, that is terminology that we agree to use for activities related to economic development. So this will be a business stats and facts page. So all things related to utilities rates, cost of operation competitively, possibility that we might subscribe to a third-party data provider. It's really difficult to keep data relevant and timely, updating it on the back end. And there are data providers that will maintain all of that stuff on the back end as an extension of your website. So that's something that we're looking at as well. This will outline incentives that are available through the city. But again, we take the position that incentives aren't ours to promise. They're just ours to put out there. Working really closely with Melissa and Brady and relevant parties when we're working with prospective business owners and promising incentives. But those will be detailed on this page. We think it's important, especially in view of what we just heard from Steve Irby, to highlight how entrepreneur-friendly we really are in this community, how many examples we have of people that started as small businesses in Stillwater that have grown into these large-scale operations, kicker Stan Clark companies, just to name a few. So we wanted to have a section on our economic development website that highlighted the stories of those people. And then vision, which in shorthand is vision, but in longhand is now and next. Developments that are happening right now, and then things that we hope to see moving forward. Not aspirational, but vision-oriented, right? Where are we going? What do we want to see? What projects are in line with where we see Stillwater going in the long term? This will be a properties widget provided to us through the regional partnership that we have with Oklahoma City that eventually, commercial realtors and realtors will be able to have a login provided to them, where they can then self-select and upload properties that they have available. We're hoping that this will cut out a little bit of that awkward middleman tendency of people not knowing what's available in Stillwater and commercial realtors not knowing where to put it other than LoopNet and their sites. And so we'll have a widget on the Chamber website where realtors can choose to, if they'd like, to house their available properties and any of the specs and information that people might want to know. These are business resources, so our regional partnership with the city, community partners, funding opportunities, anything that has to do with the Department of Commerce or the Oklahoma Finance Authority. We have many wonderful, actually, local colleagues that work in those fields. And so being able to list their information. And then small businesses. This is anything related to small businesses. So Small Business Association, SBA, the Riada Center for Business Development, the SPDIC, and the West Watkins Center, Meridian Technology Business Incubator, and then Chamber of Small Business Programming. So anything that Maggie, my colleague, the membership development coordinator, anything that she puts on, SBU, our partnership with the Meridian Business Incubator. And then this is specifically for commercial realtors. If they have anything that they want to list, almost like a news board, they can put this on for small business owners. And then inside CEDA, again, we're moving to a place where we're trying to prioritize transparency and understandability for us and also for citizens to know what the Chamber is and what CEDA is and what agreement we have outlined with you all. And so we have a page where we'll outline what CEDA is in the most basic terms that we can. And then the team, a highlight of the team on the Chamber and city side so that people know who to get into contact with for things related to economic development. I'll show you this homepage. It has really nice scrollability, a brief CEDA definition, a pull quote from Elaine about the value. Eventually, it's not that right now. Right now, it's a definition of Lauren Ibsen, but eventually, it'll be a really beautiful quote from Elaine about the value add that economic development is to the Chamber. A prompt to connect with us via social, just to see what the Chamber is doing in general. A map that shows our location and how we're connected in relation to the rest of this country. And then more prompts to get in touch with us, to follow us, and then links related to just general contact for the Chamber. So yeah, that said, we want that economic development website to be a resource, a navigatable resource, where people can get on it and know what properties are available for development, land is available for development, and what we can do on the Chamber and city side to aid and assist in business development and growth. So that leads me to the question and feedback portion of my presentation.
Thank you, Reagan. Trustees, questions?
Great presentation of everything you all are doing. And just a compliment on reaching out to Frontier Lanes. I think that's really important because as much as we like the new businesses coming in, they do have an impact on existing businesses. So I think that's great that y'all are taking the initiative to reach out to them.
Thank you. Yeah, I owe a lot of that to Elaine. She always says, you know, business expansion, economic development is recruiting new people, but also taking care of the people that you already have here, as is evidenced by the Purchase on Perkins program and other things that the Chamber is doing right now. And so, yeah, we just hope that that is a precedent, that we really do care about the existing business community and want to be of assistance in any way that we can moving forward, no matter how much we grow, which we hope to a lot.
Well, I like the format of the report. I like lining them up with the contract, deliverables, that sort of thing. I think that's really good. And I appreciate the detailed information that you provided, along with the highlights. I'm really excited about what you guys are doing and the initiatives you have. And I've heard lots of good things from other folks about your business visits and the work that you all are doing. So keep it up. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Reagan.
Thank you.
All right. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn CEDA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the store Economic Development Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.